It is being aired live this evening, so any type of comments, questions, anything like that. What I would ask if you would like to ask something, if I could have you come up and we'll just speak into the microphone, so it does get broadcast to everybody that is watching at home. I was hoping for a larger turnout, but I do appreciate that you all did take time out of your busy day to come out and join me this evening. This is the second time that we've hosted this town hall style meeting, and I do see a lot of familiar faces here with us this evening, but for the people that I have not met previously, my name is Johnny Wantu. I'm the police chief here of the City of Middletown Police Department. I've been serving as the police chief for just about two years. I took over the rank in July of 2017. I'm in just over nineteen and a half years with the Middletown Police Department, and just over twenty years in law enforcement as a whole. I love the position, I love this police department. It is by far the greatest police department in and around this area for a multitude of reasons. One being the excellent staff that I have that supports the community on a day in and day out basis. I'm just gonna start off with some statistics and going over a little bit of an overview of what the police department has done over the last year, and then I'll get into some of the programs and where we're going forward this year. I'd also encourage you to ask any questions at any time, anything that you have, ideas, thoughts, whatever it may be. And I will start by introducing the staff that's along with me here this evening. I have my admin staff with me, that is Lieutenant Frank Graziano and Lieutenant Jeff Dolan. Lieutenant Graziano oversees the services of the department, which is our detectives, our narcotics dispatching, and Lieutenant Dolan oversees the patrol function of the department, the daily operations out on the street of all the patrol officers. Also with us is our new Enhanced Neighborhood Enhancement Unit. You guys can sit down, you look way too official. Sit down, relax. And we'll get into that a little bit later, but here with me this evening I have Officer Patrick Cunningham, Officer Christopher Dolan, Rich Regino, Roberta Troya, Scott Gallagher, Kevin Vicarelli. And I'll explain to you why they're here as we get through the program this evening, and explain where we're going with their new enforcement program that we instituted this past April. So just looking back through 2018, and since the last time we did this last year, 2018 was a good year for the Middletown Police Department. Overall, we handled thirty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four calls for service. We made two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two arrests. For a city of just under thirty thousand people, it is a very busy police department. But not all those calls for service mean that bad activity was taking place. They could be quality of life type of calls, they could be service calls such as bank escorts or lockouts, or just aiding somebody with an alarm or whatnot. So I don't wanna scare anybody just by the volume, the number, the high number of calls, because it doesn't mean, like I said, that it's all bad stuff. The good part is 2018, we saw twenty-one percent in our overall crime reduction from the previous year, and we have continued on a five-year downward trend with the reduction in crime. And 2018, we beat the odds of some of the trends nationwide. The trends nationwide for specifically violent crimes started to go up in 2018, where we continued to go down, which is, again, it's a credit to all the men and women that work for the Middletown Police Department. On a positive note also for 2018, we had no homicides, which is a big success for us. We strive to have that every year. Unfortunately, in 2019, we started off a little bit different, and I'll get into that a little bit, and just go over where we are and what happened with some of that. I'm just gonna go through some of the highlights, like I said, from 2018. In 2018, we, as a department, transitioned from UCR, which is Uniform Crime Reporting, to IBR, which is called Incident-Based Crime Reporting. It drills down a little bit more specific into the types of crime that we're reporting. And traditionally, when a department makes this transition, they see a spike in their crime. Not because of increase in actual crime, but it's an increase in the way the crimes are reported. So like I said, traditionally, we do see that trend. So even though we did do that transition to the IBR, our numbers for crime still stayed low, or decreased, which was definitely a positive for the department. In 2018, we were able to hire nine new officers. That was to fill retirements, vacancies, resignations, and whatnot. In currently 2019, my budgeted staff is for seventy-one officers, and I currently have sixty-seven full-time police officers. We just gave an exam in 2018, September of 2018, and this past Saturday, or two Saturdays ago, we did an agility test as we're moving forward into the new exam list for, excuse me, prospective candidates. Also in 2018, we made some promotions within the department. Sergeant Tobin was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Police Officer Eric Hargett was promoted to the rank of sergeant, and Detective Rob McCauchy was promoted to the position of sergeant as well. We also expanded in 2018 our part-time police officer staff. We went from one that we had in 2017 to a total of three in 2018. By contract, we're allowed up to six. We haven't been able to acquire a total of six yet. We do work on it on a regular basis. And the focus of the part-time officers is primarily the bid district to be a presence in and around that area. But we were fortunate enough through negotiations with our police union to expand the part-time police officer duties coming into 2019 so that we could have them do additional duties such as vent and details, and some crossing guard fill-in, and some other ancillary duties that frees up the full-time police officers to do those more important aspects of the police job. One of the programs that we partnered with in 2018 was a program with Safe Homes of Orange County. It's called the Risk Reduction Response Program. You often hear it referred to as the RRRP. This was a program that was presented to us early on in 2018, and after hearing the presentation, we realized that it would be a benefit to the Middletown, the greater Middletown community as a whole. And basically, it focuses on people that have become victims of domestic violence. So our officers handle quite a few domestic violence. Approximately ninety to a hundred domestic violence calls per month we handle. And the definition of domestic violence has expanded over the years from not just husband and wife, but its family members, intimate partners, current and past intimate partners. So the law continually expands. So this program has been very beneficial to not just us as a police department, but the community as a whole, to help those people that are victims of domestic violence that feel vulnerable, that feel like they have nowhere to go, nobody to support them, no help anywhere. So what we do now, it's one additional piece of paper. We take a survey as we interview the victim. They answer some basic questions, then we have them call a hotline that they speak to a representative. If they call in and they're accepted, there will be a follow-up. But in addition to that, we actually have a staff member from this organization that works with us on a part-time basis, works with us out of our police department. So when that staff member comes into the department, he reviews all of the domestic violence reports that occurred in whatever days prior to that, and then he does a follow-up. He assesses them, make sure that we didn't miss anything, make sure that the proper services have been offered, and that we could follow up, go back out into the community, follow up with that victim, and ensure that they are safe. It also provides us access to homes, safe homes, to allow the victims to be removed from the residence immediately if so needed. Also in 2018, a great feather in our cap. It was a joint program with the Middletown School District. It was to bring back the School Resource Officer Program. We once had this, and it was discontinued in 2010 due to some financial reasons. But fortunately, between city officials and school officials and members of the police department, we're able to negotiate and bring back the School Resource Officer. There's a lot of demand for it, a lot of interest in it. We came to agree upon terms that work for all parties involved, and it's been a great program thus far. We do have a police officer from the City of Middletown assigned in the four Middletown schools that are here located in the City of Middletown. In the high school, we have Police Officer John Reyes. In the Twin Towers Middle School, we have Police Officer Patricia DeRamos. In Presidential Park, we have Police Officer Sarah Coletti. And in the Truman Moon Annex, we have Police Officer Sean Nieber. In 2018, we continued the outreach that I started in 2017, trying to do as many community events and outreach projects that we can to build and foster relationships within the community. Based on the success that we saw in the 2017 year, we felt that it was definitely a strong desire to continue that and to expand upon that. So we did such things as our jump-out barbecues. We did a movie, we sponsored Movie Night, where several members of the police department dressed in costume to go along with the movie. It was a showing of the Disney Zootopia, which is a police-themed movie. So many of us dressed up in costume and participated in the movie. We believe we had approximately three hundred-plus parents and youth that attended that evening. It was a really great event, and we plan on doing something similar this year. During these community outreach, we also partnered with our local fire department and our Parks and Rec Department, who have all been influential in this program being successful, whether it's a jump-out barbecue, the movie nights. We've done some outreach barbecues for the Little League, for the soccer leagues. We've challenged the teen center youth to basketball games for the last two years, which has been a fantastic program, a lot of turnout for that. It's a really great, great time. And again, the focus is really to build trust and relationships with the members of the community, whether it's at one of the barbecues, one of the local events, or such things as the basketball games. Getting into a little bit of technology that, or equipment I should say, that we purchased in 2018 to help us better police and better communicate with the community. We did purchase a radar trailer. Some of you may have seen that around the city. It is a digital speed sign that is on wheels, it's a little tiny trailer. And as you come through, if you go over the speed limit, it flashes and tells you to slow down. Simple on the cover, but what it does, in addition to just telling you how fast you're going, it gives us statistical data that we could utilize to better enforce the traffic concerns that people bring about to our attention, or bring to our attention. So this trailer counts cars for us. Every car that goes by, it gives us a numerical count as to times of day, days of week. And it tells us the high times of speeding, the low times of speeding, our high speed, our median speed, and it gives us the ability to better enforce and better deploy our resources to effectively reduce the speeding and traffic violations in and around those areas. Sometimes we may need it just to count the cars, sometimes we may need it to give us the speed statistics as well. Additionally, as far as the equipment that we purchased for 2018 is the Nixle Notification System, which is an automated system that we are able to reach out to the community and share important events or information, such as whether it's a community event or it could be a street closing or an emergency or whatnot. It's a free program. You can receive a text message, an email, or a telephone call. For anybody that is interested in participating, you could text eight-eight-eight-seven-seven-seven, the word "Middletown," it'll automatically enroll you into the system, and you'll receive whatever text that are pertinent. That is not just specific to the police department, that is City of Middletown as a whole. So DPW uses it, Fire Department uses it, Parks and Recs may use it. So we bought a program that we could all utilize and share information with. Looking at some of the training, looking back at some of the training that we participated in over the last year, we are very happy to announce and share that Lieutenant Aaron Welch was able to attend the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. It is an executive-level law enforcement training that is ten weeks long in which the member stays down there. And he is one of, one percent of law enforcement that has the great fortune of attending this training. And I believe he is the fifth member? I believe he's the fifth or sixth member of the Middletown Police Department that has attended this FBI National Academy training. Myself, Lieutenant Graziano, and Lieutenant Dolan have also attended. It is a great experience, and we thank the City of Middletown for allowing us to continue this tradition of sending our lieutenant staff to this training. Additionally, on the training level, Lieutenant Graziano was fortunate enough to attend evidence-based training. It was a collegiate-level class in which he learned about evidence-based policing and procedural justice. Based on his experience, we were able to bring a new program to the police department last year in which our whole department was trained in procedural justice, which basically is a program which teaches our officers to give a voice to the members of the community in interacting with them, making sure that they're treated with respect and dignity, and allowing them to voice their concerns and opinions. Some of the terms that were used in the program were making deposits, such as in our bank accounts. We wanna put money in, it's positive, we watch it grow. So when we make a deposit into the community, we get to see that community grow and that relationship grow. So after listening and reading about the procedural justice program, we decided that it was a great program that we wanted to bring to the entire department. So through 2018, we were able to get the whole department trained in the first phase of that, and we plan on 2019 to train everybody in the second phase of procedural justice. Additionally, into the training venue, 2018, the Middletown Police Department was able to retrain every single member of the department in active shooter training or hostile event training. We were able to partner with the Middletown School District to utilize their facilities to train each member with the assistance of the Orange County Sheriff's Department to bring everybody back up to speed on the most current trends and techniques and tactics used in case there is ever some type of a hostile incident, whether it's at the school, in the shopping center, in a parking lot, in the residence, wherever it may be. Those tactics can be used in all different forms. The reason I say that is I just want you guys to know as a community that we are very, very focused on training our department and ensuring that they have the most up-to-date and practical training to give you the best service that we can. In addition to that department-wide active shooter training, we were fortunate enough to do a county project last year where we participated and hosted a large-scale emergency preparedness drill. We utilized the Middletown High School for this drill, it was in October, during which we had upwards of a hundred personnel participate from police, fire, and EMS services, where we conducted multiple reality-based training scenarios within the school of some type of hostile situation. We incorporated the School Resource Officers into it, evacuations, utilizing other services for support, running a true emergency situation using Incident Command and all types of alternative resources. It was a great learning experience for myself and many of our staff. I was approached by several of the staff saying it was one of the best trainings that they had ever participated in, and that it was well worth the time that it took to put it together. That took approximately seven months to organize and prepare for. So there was a lot of time that went into that, and I do thank the members from the Orange County Emergency Services Department that helped us put that together. Also in 2018, we brought back the bicycle patrols. In doing so, we had multiple members of the department trained on the bicycles. And we're very fortunate to have the Middletown Coalition Cares and the Middletown Bid District purchased two electric-assist bicycles for the police department. They look like a standard police bicycle or a standard mountain bike, per se, but they have an electric-assist motor built into them. So the bicycles are able to do about thirty miles per hour with very little effort, and it helps the officers that are utilizing them to get from one point to another very quickly and effectively, and doesn't tire them out quite as much as the traditional bicycle. Middletown Coalition Cares also purchased a traditional bicycle for us as well. So again, I'd like to thank the Coalition Cares and the Bid District for the purchase of those needed items. Bikes, as many of you know, they're a great resource to build community relations as well. They allow the officers to stealthily get around the city quite easily, but it's a conversational starter as well to allow people to approach the officers, engage them in conversation. The youth love them, and it's just been a great, great program, and we hope to continue that. And as we get into 2019, we've already sent three additional officers to become bicycle-certified this year. Another advancement that we participated in 2018, and this is more of not just strictly to the Middletown Police Department, but law enforcement in the Hudson Valley as a whole, is the Hudson Valley Crime Analyst Center was open in 2018 at the Orange County 911 Center. And basically, it is a state-of-the-art facility that uses analytics to help us solve crime. This is what you see in your TV shows, all those little great gadgets and computer programs to help us utilize analytics, little pieces of information that we may have to put into databases to find our suspects and to resolve crimes. We were fortunate enough to be able to assign Detective, Detective Paul Weisenger, to be part of this intel center on a part-time basis where he participates there two days a week. The facility provides this valuable support, again, not just to us, but to law enforcement as a whole. And it's been very successful in resolving many, many crimes so far since its implementation. So that's kind of a quick overview of 2018 into the early parts of 2019. I believe we were pretty busy in making a difference and making positive change. I don't know if it's perceived by the public as the same way. I know the officers, for the most part, are pretty satisfied with most of the changes that are going forward and the training and everything that comes along with that. But as I tell them, I strive to do better and better each year, and I expect them to do the same. And we will keep pushing forward with my admin staff and the members of the police department to make more progress coming into, or going through 2019. Just real quick, so far into 2019, I'll just touch on some basic statistics just to show where we are thus far this year. So as of the end of April 2019, we're Part 1 Crimes, which are our most violent crimes such as murder, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny, and motor vehicle theft. We are currently showing a decrease of twenty-three percent thus far this year. So as I mentioned, for 2018, we showed a decrease overall. We're continuing that trend here in 2019 as well. And again, it's, I believe it's credited to the men and women that are out on the front lines of the police department day in and day out. Thus far this year, we are, as of April, the end of April 2019, the police department has handled twelve thousand nine hundred and forty calls, created one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight case reports, and has affected one thousand twenty-nine arrests. So we are definitely moving forward, being very proactive, which I definitely appreciate that the officers are continually finding ways to serve the community and make a difference in the community, addressing quality of life issues and other crimes and issues that arise. Any questions thus far?
I do have one question in regards to the digital speed limit.
Yes.
Does that also photograph people?
No, it does not. So as I said, it gives us statistical data, but it does not give any personal type of information. It will not take an image, it won't tell us which car was speeding. It doesn't give us a name, it doesn't associate any of the registration to any of the statistics that it provides to us.
And how do you decide where to place it? I know that Highland Avenue is one of the big ones because of the long stretch and food for grazing, but how do you decide where to place it?
So just let me, just repeat the question so the people at home can hear it. The question is, how do we decide where to place the electronic speed sign? So we're talking about two different ones, I believe. We have the permanent that are fixed in certain locations, and we have the portable one. So the permanent ones have been placed in locations that we've received continuous complaints about traffic to bring attention to those high-volume areas. Electronic signs have been placed in those areas. The first two were placed, or three, were placed Highland Avenue, then West Main Street, and Wayway on the Avenue. I know the one on West Main Street's been having some issues. We've been working with the electrician and our IT department to resolve that. And we've also received funding at the later part of 2018, and we're in the process of installing them now. Two additional electronic signs, one would go on Monhegan Avenue, and one would be on Cottage Street as people enter the city from the Town of Walk Hill area. And they were based on the call, or on the traffic volume in those areas, some of which came from the statistics that were generated by our portable speed trailer. So to get into the portable speed trailer, we utilize that, it's mobile, it's very easily movable. So we use it to address complaints, whether it's from a resident directly to us. It could be a resident through one of our elected officials. It could be a simple email, a call, or it could be an officer saying, "Hey, I've been doing traffic enforcement in this area, and there's definitely a problem. So I'd like to put the speed trailer there to help me effectively address this problem."
Does it matter, I don't know if I'm gonna state this properly, does it matter the length of the street? I mean, if you're talking, I know that the streets you mentioned are very long-distance areas. But in the city of Middletown, when you have certain streets from stop sign to stop sign, and maybe to another stop sign, it's not a great distance, but you may have high volume of speeders. So, does it matter? I mean, for instance, I'll give you a for instance, which is very near and dear to my heart. Between the area of Wickham Avenue going up Nap Avenue to Walk Hill to Crescent to, I forget what the last street is. Constant, constant, constant speeding, and there are a lot of children on that street. Not just the children, but anybody. So, does it matter, I'm asking?
No, it doesn't. So I'm just gonna, again, repeat the question just for the sake of not having you come up to ask the question. The question being, does it matter how long the street is? And if there's stop signs and short distances between the stop signs, if we could implement the speed trailer? Yes, we can. We have done that, we've done it on a small street such as Lennox Place. We just recently had it on Sprague Avenue, which has a stop sign situation where it's stop and go, stop and go. Like Lennox Place wasn't so much, I put it there for a speed issue, but more of a vehicle counting tool. So I could tell the volume of traffic in the time of day that the highest volume was. We could do the same thing in that location. In a few moments, I'm gonna get into the Neighborhood Enhancement Unit, and we could address that specific, your specific issue with the officers that are assigned to your ward, and we could make arrangements to get that up there and help with your situation. You're welcome. Any other questions thus far? Yes?
You said so far this year that about twelve hundred arrests conducted by the City of Middletown Police Department?
Yes, that is correct.
Now, do we know for the majority of those arrests what it was for? Like, is there a certain, I guess, crime being committed that is the majority of those arrests?
I could drill down into that a little bit. Like, I have the software to do such, I did not bring that statistics with me this evening. If there's something specific you're looking for, I'm more than willing to follow up with you and let you know what that may be, or if you're looking at a specific area, I could help you with that as well.
Nothing really specific, and I presume for the operation of the police department, none of this could be put online for transparency, because I guess you're dealing with a lot of this. I mean, is it possible to find these statistics online, or is it really just kept to the police department?
We haven't put the monthly reports out online yet, but there was, is the software still working to show the crime mapping? Off of our website, there is a link for crime mapping that would show you reported crimes. It doesn't specifically say if there's an arrest made there, but it will show you the types of crime and the locations of those crimes. That may help you. That is something we could look into to see if we are able to pull out our statistics on a regular basis. You're welcome. Anything else? Yes?
So the press release today about the arrest that was made, I believe, was in Town of Walk Hill. And I received some questions, and just, you know, based off the press release, could you just explain briefly how we can conduct a search warrant into Town of Walk Hill?
Yes, so we don't primarily do our investigative work into other towns and municipalities. Our investigative work is focused here in the City of Middletown. But as we all know, the city is approximately five square miles, it's not that big. It does not have a fence or walls around it, so people freely come and go. So often, we find that people that are coming into the city to commit crimes such as drug dealing may not live within the city limits, but our investigation leads them to their, either residence or the places they're conducting their businesses, or their storage facilities, or whatnot. So that specific investigation, without getting into too many of the specific details of it, those people were doing their business here within the city limits. Our narcotics team, which is a very active team, it's overseen by Sergeant Ron Magzamin. Like I said, they're very active, they're out there. They utilize tips and information surveillance. They came across this person, conducted an investigation. Most narcotics investigations take many, many weeks, if not months, to come to a conclusion. So the conclusion of this led to this person in the Town of Walk Hill. Typically, when we go outside of our jurisdiction, we seek the support of that government. Typically, when we go outside of our jurisdiction, we seek the support of that government agency, that police agency that oversees that municipality, such as the town of Walk Hill, or we'll use the state police or the sheriff's department or whoever it may be. We've had similar situations that have led us into the town of Crawford, the towns of Greenville, Wayway Anda. But again, the focus is that it starts here or their business is being conducted here in the city of Middletown.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Before I get into some of the other stuff, I apologize that I did not acknowledge our elected officials that are here with us this evening. Alderman Jerry Kleiner from our second ward and also Alderman Green from the second ward. We appreciate your support tonight. Just speaking of that, one thing that I am very grateful for is the support, not just from our elected officials on the council, the support from my police commission, the support from the mayor, and all the other city departments. I believe to be effective, we have to use all resources that we have and I think that's one thing that we've shifted gears and started moving towards over the last several years, is working together as a whole for, to work towards a common goal. We, on a regular basis, work with our code department. Quite often, we get complaints that aren't criminal in nature, so we find that code is a more effective solution to those problems. Thus, we've, we've established a great rapport and relationship with them so that when it isn't a criminal situation, we could utilize their resources to address those concerns. Again, that's been very effective. And as I mentioned, with some of our outreach programs, we've partnered with our fire department, Parks and Recs, the local EMT division. So that, to me, goes a long, long way, that we could work together, again, to resolve and work towards a common goal. On the same topic, I don't believe that we as a police department could police this city on our own, no matter how many police officers we have. To effectively police the city, I believe we have to work together as a community. We can't be on every street, on every block. I cannot put a police officer in every neighborhood as much as I would like to, but together, if we all work together, if you could be our eyes and our ears and help us, provide us information, work with us, call us when you see something suspicious or something that doesn't look right. Way more than I would like to hear, I hear that people don't want to call us because they don't want to bother us, they don't think the information or their situation is important enough or whatever, but it could be and it may be, and that might be a piece of information that helps us resolve something a lot larger, or it could be that we are able to resolve something that is something minor that is creating a quality of life issue. So I please, I encourage you all to contact us whenever you want, whenever you can, with any type of information. We will not be upset. You don't have to give us your name. You could call anonymously. You could email us. You could utilize Nixle to send us anonymous tips. Also, with the Nixle program, you can send us photos. You could take a photo and send that to us.
I wonder how to do that.
Okay, we could help you with that.
Do you think, does it work with videos as well?
Have we received any video yet?
I believe you can upload either or.
Okay. We could talk to you about that and help set it up if it's not set up already. But I can't encourage the residents to contact us enough. That is something that I personally don't like to hear, that they don't, people don't want to bother us. We're here 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We don't take off holidays, weekends, there's always someone here. So please call us, let us know what it is that is going on in your neighborhood or what situation you would like us to help resolve. Mr. Kleiner?
343-3151. I think you should repeat it.
I will.
Because that's one of the hardest things, is encouraging people when they have a problem, please call you. Don't worry, oh, I don't want to bother you, don't call you. That's point number one. Point number two, you didn't mention this in all the things you do, but I want to commend the police department. You've been such terrific partners on our outreach to the homeless. I mean, we don't think of it as much as we get into warmer weather, but we have, in going out for point in time survey and bringing our officers out to people to do outreach to people, to bring them into the warming station or to bring them to honor or to get them some shelter, you have been so proactive in that. So really are our partners in that and I commend you for it.
Well, thank you. I'd like to just comment on the first point that you brought up about telephone number. You're, I'm glad you mentioned it because as an elected official, you probably hear the same thing that I'm, I'm saying, is that people don't want to call us and I think you just confirmed that. The other thing is the telephone number. 343-3151 is our main telephone number. And in emergency, 911 works all the time. Call 911, it gets patched into us. If it's not emergency, try not to use 911 unless, I mean, if that's all you could do, we definitely understand it and there are definitely call takers there to take your call and point it in the right direction. The 343-3151 number comes directly to our dispatch center. You won't have to repeat yourself more than once, you're gonna get one of our call takers here. We have dispatchers 24 hours a day, seven days a week, just like we have police officers. When you do call 911, you will be, your call will be assessed, you'll be, you know, asked a series of questions based on the type of call and then that information will be relayed to the Middletown Police Department. So there's a small lapse, but if that's all you could do, if that's all you have time for, by all means, it's definitely going to work and get, get the services that you need. The second thing with the homeless, I appreciate you bringing that up. It has definitely been on our forefront of trying to help, more so to get services to help people not be homeless for long periods of time. So it's not just about getting them off the street quickly and into the warming center during the cold weather, which is a great resource and I know you've done yourself a tremendous amount of work with that, so kudos to you as well. But I like to look at it as how can we get these people off the street for the long term? So as Alderman Kleiner said, we've partnered with Honor and we've done quite a bit of outreach with them throughout the year, trying to work with them. We have a great relationship, a great partnership with them. Again, it goes back to those partnerships and utilizing the resources towards a common goal. In fact, Mr. Kleiner, we have an outreach tomorrow with Honor. We are going out, we have two different times that we're going out tomorrow. Some of the officers behind me will be going on that detail to go out and just assess the needs of the homeless and see what type of resources we can provide to them. Any other quick questions before we move forward?
May I ask, what is your average response? If a call is made to you by the 343 number, what is the average response?
There is no, no average response. So when the call comes in, it's assessed for need, prioritize. I went over some of the numbers of calls. In 2018, we handled 37,474 calls. So when that call comes in, the call taker assesses the need of that call, the urgency of it. If it is on the urgent scale, it is going to be dispatched immediately. If it's something that doesn't have an urgency to it, and don't mistake me when I say this because I know when someone calls, it is priority, priority to them. Whatever it may be, it is a priority, it is very important to them, and I don't want to ever say that someone's call isn't important enough to have an immediate response. However, we don't always have the availability of police officers to send to every single call as soon as it comes in. As it does become busy, some shifts are busier than others, some times of day and times of the year are much busier than others. But I would say, for the most part, priority calls are responded to very quickly. There are some...
That's been my issue.
It depends on what type of call it is and we could, if you have a specific, we could look into it and maybe I could explain to you why you had to wait a little bit of time. Like I just took a call over the weekend, it came in over the weekend. When I came back on Monday, I listened to a voicemail. It was a local business owner that was upset that his panic alarm went in and the, it was after hours, it was when one of the employees was there after hours, but the call took approximately 40 minutes before a police officer arrived. Obviously, right away, it gets my attention, like why did this happen? So I go back into our blathered calls and I could see that during that timeframe, they were extremely busy. Some calls require two police officers to respond to, most do in today's environment, some only require one. So we have to prioritize and continue to prioritize those calls as they come in to see which ones need immediate service. And as I said, everybody's call, no matter what it is, is the most important to them and I totally understand that and I wish I could tell you that I could have a police officer respond immediately every single time. Just a quick example of a typical shift. I said that we have 60, budgeted for 71 police officers this year. I currently have 66. We are in the process of hiring one. If everything goes well, he should be with us within a week or so, that'll bring me up to 67. There's four to five police officers that work each shift. So if I have two calls that require two police officers each, that may lead me with zero police officers or one police officer to handle the next call. So if another priority call comes in, that call gets pushed off a little bit more and more. It's not that it's not important to us and I don't want you to take that away from me this evening. Every call is important to us and we will do our best to give you a timely response. If you or anybody has an experience where you don't believe that it was appropriate, I welcome you to contact me and we could talk about it. And maybe we made an error, maybe it was due to the call volume. We're not perfect, sometimes, you know, things do happen, but we do have many systems in place to ensure that every call is addressed in a timely manner.
Can I touch on that for a moment, please?
Yes.
Over the weekend on a Saturday, there was a mass frenzy in front of my house. It started out as a birthday party, family birthday party, turned into a social media, hey, there's a party going on. And that wasn't the problem. The problem was there were people there who were not welcome there for certain issues and a fight broke out between 30 and 50 kids in front of my house. I called your number, I know the number by heart, I'm born and raised here, I've been dealing with the police department 55 years. And it's one of the things I wrote down to speak about tonight. I want to commend all and every officer that was involved in that because within, I swear to you, I called and said, get here as quickly as you can. And by the time I hung up the phone and went back outside, oh my God, there were at least five, if not more, vehicles out there. And the way I did it was I said, it's between Wickham Avenue and Walk Hill Avenue, because I knew the minute one of them showed up, when you guys showed up, they were gonna run. So that way, you guys had people posted at Wickham Avenue and you had some coming around, coming down Nap Avenue. So that way, they were contained. Thank you so much. I don't know if any of you were involved in it, but it was tremendous. And I want to give a shout out to Officer Conklin, I believe her first name is, starts with an A, female.
Kelly Conklin, she's one of our newest officers, yes.
Because she came, I had questions as to what's going on, whatever, whatever. I live right next door to one of this all-star, he's in my neighborhood, and they're wonderful people. But can I have a social media, you know, what happens when the word gets out? And there were some very unwelcome people. She came over and stood with me at my porch and talked with me for a while and it just felt like a community-based interaction that I had with her. And I want to commend her for that. It calmed my nerves somewhat, but thank you, everybody who was involved in that. It was, it was, you see this on TV, but when you experience it firsthand, I gotta tell you, it was quite shocking.
Well, thank you for sharing that with us. A couple of things there. It kind of follows up on the priority of call dispatching. Something of that effect, a large fight, that many people, that's a priority style call. So as you explained, that required an immediate response of all personnel. So then if there's a call that is categorized not as high on the list, that call gets just pushed down a little bit more until a call such as that is resolved. Anything that is life-threatening or there's weapons involved or anything that can really cause great harm to somebody, that becomes our priority. It could be a medical call even or an accident with injuries, something that we need that immediate attention to. So again, not that your call's not important or some other calls aren't important, but it's stuff like that that does garner that priority. As far as Officer Conklin, she is one of our newest officers and I'm glad to hear that she took the time to talk to you and explain to you because that's what we want from all of our officers. And that is part of the focus of our Neighborhood Enhancement Unit and that was part of the focus of the procedural justice training to explain to people, talk to people, let them hear what's going on, hear from them, build that guardianship and those partnerships, those eyes and ears in the community.
Can you go please give her the, add a girl, add a boy, add a girl?
Yes, yes, we'll ensure that that is passed along. Thank you. Any other questions, quick? Going back to 2018 a little bit, we had a homicide in 2017 in which a 19-year-old young man was killed as a result of gang violence. That investigation took a little bit longer than we anticipated and a little bit longer than we wanted to come to conclusion. However, in the summer of 2018, we did bring that to conclusion. But the reason that it took so long is that we focused not just so much on the homicide, we focused on the larger incident around that homicide, which were two rival gangs that were going at each other with some back and forth of violence. They were homegrown street gangs here from the area. So we put our resources together and we utilized our law enforcement partners on both the state, county, and federal level to do everything we can to eradicate both of those gangs. And I would like to say that we're pretty successful. We didn't get 100% of the people involved, but we got a good portion of them. And it was related to the homicide, we were able to arrest them and charge them with conspiracy to, some of them were charged with conspiracy to commit murder and some were charged with conspiracy to distribute narcotics. And that's really was the focus around those two, two groups. So that was a great, successful conclusion to a very, very awful situation that occurred. But I don't want people to think that we sat around and didn't do anything and we didn't put enough time and attention into that investigation. That was a priority to us and that was worked on on a regular basis from our detective division all the way through our patrol division with little pieces of intel and information and knowing who was out there and what was going on. But like I said, the ultimate, the end result was basically eradicating the nucleus of both of those, those groups. So it was a great job by my staff and the other law enforcement partners, the district attorney's office that helped us on many aspects there. Brings me to something more recent that we're dealing with. We do have a couple of small groups that are trying to reformalize themselves or to formalize themselves into some small groups, taking over where these two groups were removed from. So we've been doing a lot of intel into these two groups and trying to track their movements. They started off, they're young, they started off a little push and fighting here and there and they've evolved into some more serious crimes. We've identified most of the people involved in those, those two groups and what we did, realizing that they were young, most of them teenagers, we took the initiative, we invited them and their parents in to speak with us. We didn't know what type of results we were gonna get. We did it just about a month ago. We sent a generic letter out to the addresses that we could locate for these individuals. And to our surprise, we filled this room to, it was only standing room only, with many, many parents, many kids that were affiliated with these two groups. We utilized our partners once again, from surrounding police departments, our relationship, our partners that we have built relationships with from the school district, local clergy, the district attorney's office, and we had some guest speakers come in to kind of lay down what's going to happen to these young individuals if they continued this type of behavior. We didn't single anybody out, but we did give each and every parent with their child the opportunity to talk in private about the specifics of what their child was engaged in, where it was going on, when it was going on, and how bad it could end up. So like I said, it filled the room very, very positive. It was an event that started at 6:30 at night and I believe we walked out of here about 10:30 that evening after we had the opportunity to address every individual that wanted to be addressed. Many parents left here that night with a different view of what their child was doing when they believed they were somewhere else. And our hopes are obviously that we stop that type of behavior, but if we could save one, one of those, those young youths that evening, that's a success to me. The reason I bring that up is not to let you know that there's additional gang activity forming, but I just wanted to let you know that that's the type of proactivity that we're taking on our end to try to stop this type of activity before it gets established and ends up as our 2017 situation did. This brings me to our new patrol focus. In April, on April 15th of this year, I instituted a new way that we are patrolling the city. I attended some conferences back in October, police chief conferences where I sat in on many well-renowned speakers and law enforcement administrators from large departments, small departments, and brought back some of the ideas that I learned. In addition, as Lieutenant Graziano was attending that collegiate class, he learned... In addition, as Lieutenant Graziano was attending that collegiate class, he learned about some of the same principles and ideas. So as our administration team sat down and discussed some of the ideas and flowed to the ideas, we decided that we wanted to implement some of them. So what we did is we created four, two officer teams, and we've assigned them to each ward. So, each ward has two designated police officers assigned to that ward. These police officers don't answer radio calls, they go around and they try to resolve the issues that arise in each and every ward. Whether it be a traffic complaint, a quality of life issue such as litter, noise, kids playing basketball in the street, it could be a narcotics complaint. They work great with our code enforcement, as I mentioned before, to address some other issues that become quality of life issues. But for me, it gives these officers the opportunity to work on resolving the root of the situation. All too often, when someone calls the police department for a situation, well, just for argument's sake, someone passing a stop sign in my neighborhood. I'm tired of seeing the same car pass a stop sign all the time. You call the police, we send the police car over, they spend a few minutes there, they get sent to the next call. Did they resolve your problem? Not really. They came, they basically put a little Band-Aid on it. Nine out of ten times, I don't really see someone pass a stop sign when they're there. But with this program, these officers are able to spend that time on that specific call in that specific neighborhood, get to know the people that are involved. We encourage them to go and speak with the callers or the complaint makers in a positive way, to get more information, to build that relationship, to say, hey, I'm here to resolve your problem, I'm here to work with you to help resolve your problem. They'll canvass the neighborhoods, talk to neighbors, to ensure that they're getting all the information about the problem, and that they're being directed in the right manner on the problem. So as I said, we started April fifteenth, so it's been just over a month. Thus far, it's been very positive feedback from both the staff that are assigned to it, as well as the residents of the community. We have received a couple emails and letters from people that have experienced the positive enforcement actions taken by the officers, which to me shows, says volumes as to the success of the program, or the direction that the program is going, the successful direction. The other thing is, we're able to cover six days of the week with this program. So Monday through Saturday, the officers will be assigned in their workday overlap. Four of the officers will work on Monday through Friday, four will work on Tuesday through Saturday. So we cover all six days of the week, and then they rotate each week so that we start at eight in the morning, or thereabouts, depending, they could flex a little bit to resolve whatever problems they may be, may need to if it's prior to eight o'clock. And then the second group comes on in and around that four o'clock hour and works through midnight. So, we're covering approximately sixteen hours a day with the special patrols, six days a week. So it's giving additional coverage throughout the city. It's giving the officers assigned the opportunity to really spend the time in neighborhoods. They're not responsible for the city as a whole, although they can respond to other areas of the city and help out as needed. But their primary focus is in specific wards, and like I said, getting to know business owners, organizations, the residents. They're encouraged to get out on foot, talk to people, walk around, engage the youth. If they are certified to ride a bicycle, we encourage them to ride the bicycles. Ward meetings, we encourage them to go to the elected official ward meeting so they could hear issues that are brought about by the residents of the city, so we could directly address them and help resolve them. To be honest, there's some situations we're never gonna resolve fully, but we'll work hard to do our best to try to do such, such as, I know one of the wards, the fourth ward is assigned with traffic enforcement on Dulson Avenue. It is non-stop speeding, and I don't know if we could put enough cops there to stop that altogether, but I could tell you, the officers assigned there have made a great dent in issuing speeding tickets for the year. So sooner or later, the message will get out that, you know, when you come through town, you, your probability of getting a speeding ticket is that much greater. That's the offices that I have here with me today. As I introduced them earlier on, and I addressed which ward they are in, I want you to get to know them, I want them to get to know you. They're here to help, they're here to resolve problems, they're here to address concerns, issues. They have a telephone number that they can be reached out, left voicemails. If you call the main three-four-three-three-one-five-one number and ask for their voicemail, you can get their voicemail, you may email them. All of us have an email of our first initial, our last name, at MiddletownPolice.com, it's on our website. So there's many, many ways that you could get information to them. We meet bi-weekly to discuss the progress, concerns, issues amongst all the four groups, so that we could work together to see if we have similar issues amongst the wards, or to see if somebody was able to resolve an issue in a way that somebody else hasn't thought about yet. So again, it's been very positive, the feedback, like I said, from within and from the community has been very, very positive. So we're hoping that this is going to be a permanent assignment that we could run with for many, many years to come, as long as it stays positive and proactive. Right now, we are running a pilot of the program through the fall to see the success or to see how it impacts us. By taking those eight officers out of my patrol staff, it does create a burden on our patrol staff, and that makes those officers have to handle a little bit more call volume. But the ultimate goal is if we could start resolving roots of problems and eradicate that issue, that our call volume goes down overall. That's what the statistics for this type of a program show, and we're hopeful that we're gonna see the same type of results as we move forward. So I hope that if anybody has experienced, or had an encounter with any of the Neighborhood Enhancement Officers that it's been positive, and I hope that they've been able to help resolve the issue that was brought to them. I have nothing but confidence in them. The reason they were selected, especially as the first-round officers for this new program, is because of their drive and their desire to be proactive, positive police officers. They demonstrate on a daily basis their desire to make a difference in this community, and they continue to do so. They're very passionate about this position, about their position as police officers, and they're going to lead to the success of the program I have nothing but confidence in. Yes?
Do you think providing any opportunities over the summer for the people who live in that ward to meet their police officers?
We have not set up a specifically date and location for a meet and greet, but what we do encourage the officers is to make their way through every street within the wards, throughout the various times of the day, and to try to meet as many of the people within those wards as possible. That is something that we can consider. Thus far, I have not considered that, but it is something that we can, can consider. And it may be a positive opportunity for residents to meet the officers and get to know them a little bit better. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't mean to keep taking up all the time, but I have brought a question to you from Linda Jansen.
Okay.
Who cannot be here tonight, she's at a graduation. She had written on your Facebook page, but she didn't hear back from you, she's asking me. I want to ask the Middletown Police Department, can something be done about pedestrians walking in the street, especially in front of the Erie and Park Circle? She had to change her boot home because people, we know this, this always happens, people walk between cars, you don't see them, you're traveling, or people are opening up their car doors, you know, because, especially in front of the Erie, there's both-side parking. So you're limited, you're kind of squished there for oncoming traffic. And people are walking out, they're not using the crosswalks, they're just hopping out in between. So she's asking, she doesn't know if there's any type of solution to this. She mentioned how in Philadelphia, if you don't use crosswalks, you get sidewalk, you know, it's very dangerous.
Yes, and I have actually just received similar complaints within the last week of people walking in the street, riding bicycles in the street, groups of youths in the street rather than using the sidewalk, creating exactly what you're saying, some issues for people motorists passing through, and their safety concerns. Nobody wants to hit somebody that's, you know, walking in the street, and we don't want to be stopped in traffic as a result of that as well. It is something that we put out in a patrol note to our staff, to advise them to take note of these types of situations and to address them. We can issue jaywalking tickets. I don't know if enforcement is the, the best solution in that type of a situation, but maybe more of an educational opportunity for the officers to address that with specifically the groups of youths, to say, hey, there's a reason the sidewalks are there, you need to get yourself on the sidewalk to be safe. The city charter does, or code, does not allow people to ride bicycles on sidewalks. So the people on bicycles need to ride the sides of the street, and sometimes when you have on-street parking, they are a little bit more into the street. I'm happy to say that the city is working on a sidewalk project where intersections are gonna be redone, the sidewalks, to make them handicap accessible, more accessible, so maybe that could be a solution. There's gonna be some crossing lights put in at specific intersections, so maybe that, I'm hopeful that that will also be helpful to address some of that. And as much as I don't want to see the enforcement on everybody in that, in that situation, or in those circumstances, sometimes people do need to be issued a citation when they're doing that, if they're doing it in a manner that is causing a specific hazard or intentional hazard, the officers have the discretion to issue a jaywalking ticket.
I doubt this would ever happen, but do you in your own mind think that they will ever eliminate both sides of the street parking, for instance, in front of the Erie Restaurant? Because it's such a high traffic and such a high vehicles.
I can't answer that specifically, I don't know what's gonna happen with the on-street parking. I do know there is part of the downtown revitalization plan, that there is a plan to restructure the parking situation from the parking lots. I know there's discussion about building a parking garage. So there is some discussions, I'm just not familiar with all the specifics to answer that fully for you. Well, I'm sure if you came to one of the council meetings, or one of your ward meetings, you may be able to get more specific information to that question.
Yeah, I agree, at times, not always, but try.
I understand.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Ask a hundred.
You touched on code enforcement. Our code enforcer, see Carrie smiling, I'm going to work that. I bought my, I'm born and raised in Middletown, but I bought my curtain house seven years ago, and I will tell you, the last five years of my seven, every single year, I get a letter warning, which I just got in the mail two days ago, from Mr. Steenrod. Yeah, anybody who knows me, you know what I'm gonna say. Come to my house, you're all welcome, please drive past my house at twelve and a half Avenue. Look at my house, at my property. Look at my neighbor's property. We take care of our properties, we mow them, we have flowers, and they're very inviting. And yet, every single year, I get a letter warning me that I have five days to clean up my property, or I will be taken in one hundred dollars. What the hell?
I wish I could answer that for you as well. I do not oversee the code department, that is overseen by Department of Public Works Commissioner. That could be a question you have for him. When I say we work with code, when we see some type of a situation that is a code violation, we don't always act upon it ourselves, we make a referral to the code department and have them come and assist us with that. Some of them are priority, that we need them out right away, some of them, we could put in a note to them, we call them a yellow ticket, and then they follow up later.
It's almost like our area, I don't know what it is, it's almost like, I hate to say this, like he targets us. And I'll tell you one thing that probably really, I'll say angered him, was two years ago, he gave me a ticket because my garbage can was not, what is it, thirty feet from the road? It was twenty-five? Isn't it fifteen? I was five feet off from the road, and he gave me a ticket.
Again, I think these are, this should be a good conversation for you to have with Commissioner To Will.
I just want you to know that this is what goes on in the community, you know, and it's...
And I could hear your frustration, and I personally don't know what your house looks like, and I don't know why. I drive by through there all the time, I'm just not familiar with your specific house. However, code enforcement as a whole has a purpose. As far as a single code enforcement officer, I can't answer why he issued a certain summons at a certain time. But their purpose is to ensure that the city, all the codes are being adhered to, properties are being well-maintained and kept. There's a tremendous amount of codes that can be violated, just like laws, like traffic laws. Everybody doesn't know every single traffic law that a police officer could write a summons for, and it's the same for code enforcement. So they have a vast list of offenses that they can summons people for and address. I'm happy to hear he at least gave you a warning to let you know. So that's, that's a good use of his discretion.
Well, I went out with my lawnmower, and I, there was nothing to mow. It was, I'm, what the, I, I don't know where his head is. But two years ago, he lost his fight with me with the garbage can.
Okay.
So, does I give you an indication of maybe why?
Again, I'm gonna have to redirect you to Commissioner To Will, to address anything with code personnel, if it's a personnel issue. Sorry, can't help you with that one.
I know, I drive around town, I see some of the areas that really need attention, that really look bad, and I'm hoping they're getting those letters, I really am. But then when I get one, I...
It reminds me of people when they complain about a parking issue, or a stop sign issue, and then they end up being the subject that gets that summons, they're furious with us as to why they got the summons of the person that complained. Well, when we give a directive for the officers to go out and address that traffic issue or parking issue, we don't say enforce it on everybody except for this person because they're the ones that reported it. We ask that it's enforced as a whole. So I do, I hear similar complaints on a regular basis, based on people bringing things to our attention, but then they're also the violators as well.
I understand. I understand, thank you.
But they are out there, they are trying to do a good job, the code enforcement officers. Just like the police department, they have, you know, a lot of work ahead of them, a lot of calls, a lot of calls for service, requests for service, and, you know, overall...
Maybe if he had been specific, maybe if he had said, I don't know, you know, write down what, what he's talking about, what is it you're finding fault with, and, and I would know. But otherwise, I'm...
Try to make an appointment to chat with him.
Oh, hell no.
Okay?
No, I told you, I won this case about the garbage can, he's probably moving it over a million years. Anyway.
Just, as I talked about statistics, I mentioned that in 2018, we had no homicides, and I know, we entered in 2019, it was a rough start for us. I just want to touch on them real quick. Again, not to bring focus to them, but just to let people know a little bit more about them. So January and February, we dealt with a homicide each month. They're domestic-related homicides, in which the victim was murdered by their spouse. Unfortunately, in both situations, the spouse was a former member of law enforcement, or actually, one was a current member of law enforcement. So it sends a bad message, not just to the community that there's a homicide, but to law enforcement as a whole. In both of these situations, we've racked our brains, and we've gone over our statistics, our historical reports with these situ, with these two incidents. We had no prior contacts, or very minimal prior contacts with them. And there is not a specific patrol function that could have been implemented to alleviate or prevent either one of those two incidents. That was kept within the walls of their house, which is very common in domestic violence situations. And I'm told with situations where murder-suicide is not so much, anything other than a control situation, that they want to control the spouse. But what I can tell you is, our partnership with Safe Homes and the RRP, our RRP program will help us in the future identify situations of people that are subject and suffering from domestic violence, whether it's verbal or physical abuse, or mental abuse, and hopefully get them some additional help before we have any other tragic incidents like that. So statistically, it shows that we had those two murders. We do have, we did have those two murders, but I want people to understand that they were not situations that patrol could have addressed and prevented in any manner. The third one, like I said, we started off pretty rough this year, we hit the first three months of the year with homicides. The third one was a gentleman that was murdered in his home. We are actively investigating this still, there has not been an arrest made. As I mentioned earlier, with the homicide from 2017, our Detective and Patrol Division worked daily on those investigations, or on that investigation, as they are with this investigation. There's not a day that goes by that they are not turning a rock, interviewing somebody, tracking down some lead, or following up on a piece of evidence to help us bring this to conclusion and find the people that are responsible for it. are responsible for it. A couple of weeks ago, we did put out a press release with some images of our suspects in hopes to stir up some information within the community. It was successful. We did receive some additional pieces of information. Unfortunately, I cannot disclose where we are and where we're going with this investigation at this time, but I want to ensure you that it is actively being worked on. I was briefed on the investigation this afternoon, not just because of tonight's meeting, but just as a normal course of business. And we are definitely making strides in the right direction, which is a, a very positive situation. As with the two domestic homicides, I do not believe that a patrol function could have eliminated this incident either. From everything we have thus far, it does not seem to be a random act of violence. It was specific, intentional, and the victim was sought out. So I say that for two reasons, not just to show that, you know, a patrol in that area, I mean, is there a possibility that a patrol driving by as the, the victims or the suspects were going in there? Absolutely, that could have been. But I don't want people to feel that Middletown has the crime right now that people should be nervous in any way to go outside or participate in any type of recreational activities or enjoy all the positive things that Middletown brings to it. These were very specific incidents. They're not random acts of violence. We're very fortunate that our patrols have been able to address those types of situations and the street type violence and we're really working hard on addressing that. And that brings us back to any, the Neighborhood Enhancement Unit, their presence in these neighborhoods and those high volume areas of those types of activities that are taking place on the street. They're there on a more regular basis, so it's quelling those situations and preventing some of them from happening. I don't expect the Neighborhood Enhancement or the Police Department as a whole to stop all of them, but we're definitely doing all we can to prevent and curb as many of them as we can. I can assure you that I am dedicated to do the best that I can with the resources I have and to give the men and women of the Police Department every opportunity, resource available to us to be effective in their positions as well and to ensure that they could do the best job that they can. Any other questions?
This is a topic, not, not of this topic. I don't know the exact right time to say this. Rabbi Rubenstein, Rabbi Tavasana, I too, and Daniel, I just wanted to just say thank you from the bottom of my heart and speaking with my congregants, board, to say thank you for all the patrolling you've done. It's unbelievable when we get to see that there's someone in a parking lot, you know, and I don't know, maybe they just need to sit there and watch out for something else going on. But whatever it is, it's just nice. Every time there's some kind of, at least they go through a parking lot sometimes, you'll see them in the back. It really is helpful. And our congregants are a little nervous with, you know, everything that's going on in the country, the anti-Semitic incidents occurring. So we are taking our own security measures. But, you know, whatever the Middletown Police has done, it's been really, really appreciated. And we know anytime our alarm does go off at half the time, the policemen are always taking it very, very seriously and are there extremely quickly. I really, really appreciate that.
Thank you for those kind words and I know I've communicated you in the, with you in the past, especially when those horrific incidents take place and we do try to step up our controls. What I would like to put out to the community is we'll do that for whomever needs, any organization that needs additional patrols for whatever reason it may be. Give us a call, let us know and we'll do our best to accommodate you. We will also work with organizations and businesses with some security assessments to help them address anything or at least bring it to light some possible opportunities that could help them secure their location or prepare themselves for some type of horrific incident if it ever does occur. So we do have those resources available.
Would you just repeat his comment a little bit? I know people aren't, at all aren't going to hear this unless it's through the microphone.
No, I, I understand that. So Rabbi Rubenstein commented on the positive response of the police officers in light of all the anti-Semitic incidents that have been taking place throughout the country and having the officers in and around his facility and his congregants are appreciative and notice it as well. No problem. Sorry, I didn't give you guys the mic. Feel awkward having you come up and stand right in front of me. So, any other questions? How about for my staff? Anything you guys would like to address?
The Classic is this weekend, so we can put that out. That's a good thing.
Orange Classic. So yes, just the Orange Classic, the Ruthie Dino and some of the other events that start taking place. We just had the Memorial Day Parade. We do our best to address the traffic concerns and the safety concerns of the participa, participants. And in doing so, we are going to cause some inconvenience for other motorists and pedestrians throughout the city. We do our best to put it out on social media. We'll use Nixle. We'll use our Facebook, the city's Facebook, the city's website and let everybody know the routes of all these different events, the times. But unfortunately, we will continue to close down streets. And I shouldn't say unfortunately, it's done for a purpose to ensure the safety of all of the participants. So I do apologize for anybody that feels that they're inconvenienced. However, it is for a good cause and it is part of, it is one of the many recreational activities that the city of Middletown has to offer its residents and guests.
The only reason I bring it up is my 84-year-old mother drives to St. Joseph's and every year I tell her, don't go at this time. And she gets, I had to walk. I had to walk. Is there any way for the town, you get to the town of Walk Hill, then to get it on their channels? Because I do, I'm actually, so she'll watch, she'll watch some of that, you know, so that the people that are coming from the town of Walk Hill may not know the roots as well. They're not going to look in the city of Middletown's Facebook page. They're going to be looking at the town of Walk Hill stuff.
Okay.
You know, just to kind of let those people have a heads up.
So the question was, is there a way that we could coordinate with the town of Walk Hill to ensure that they can post and get the information out in regards to traffic patterns and street closures in regards to the road races? We will do that. I'm going to task one of my admin lieutenants with following up with the town of Walk Hill to ensure that we can at least pass the message along. We can't make them do that, but we could ask that of them. So the, the Classic kicks off this weekend, followed by Ruthie Dino the following weekend. Some of the same streets will be closed. We do our best to open them up as quickly as possible. In fact, two years ago, we switched the times of the races to allow them to wrap up about the same time. So it shortens the street closures, closures by about an hour or so to make it a lot better. And we tried not to close them until the last minute. The other thing is the concerts, the summer concerts have started this weekend or this past week, Thursday at Something Sweet Park. Every Thursday evening there's a free concert. Friday nights, free concerts at Festival Square. I encourage people to come out. They're great times. We have a tremendous amount of activities planned for the summer through the Police Department as well. This Friday, we kick off our Jump Out BBQ with a barbecue that we coordinated with the Middletown Little League. During their All-Star Games, we come out in force, provide them a barbecue dinner and then we engage with them and we play some baseball. We play catch, wiffle ball and have a great time with, with the youth that evening. We'll also be doing our Youth Police Academy this summer. We'll do three term, or three weeks of that with different age groups. Do Cops and Kids Day, the Night Out event in August. And what are some of the other ones that are coming up?
Moving, the Cops and Cookies and...
Yeah. The movies will start, I believe, in July. The free movies on King Street. They're a great, great time to come out to. We're planning on doing another movie theme event come September or late August, early September as the summer wraps up. During the winter, we have done Cops and Cookies, which is a real fun event. We get the kids to come down and make cookies with the police officers and we show a movie. And it's always very well attended. And what else do we have going on?
Car seat installations. We've got to bring up more of them.
As the lieutenants reminded me, we do have several car seats, car seat certified installers. Many of the police officers have become certified car seat technicians. So what that means is they have been trained on the proper installation of a car seat. Who would have ever known that you needed someone to actually become trained on that? I know when I had kids, I just put it in and buckled it up, but it was definitely wrong. But they definitely take pride in what they do. I receive a lot of positive feedback when they do an installation of how professional they are, how thorough they are. And they go through, they take the time and go through the process and explain it to the recipient, whether it's a new parent, family member or whatnot. And oftentimes, we do receive grants that we are able to provide some people with car seats that are in need of those car seats. They cannot give them out to everybody, but there are different programs throughout the summer that we will have them at, that we would do installations and provide free car seats to people. If you know someone that does need one, besides the specific events, we could do it by appointment and they could call the Police Department, ask for one of the technicians. They'll be forwarded and an appointment will be made. Anything else? Neighborhood guys? Once again, I'll just introduce the neighborhood, neighborhood enhancement officers one more time, just so people can become familiar with them. And I do encourage the residents to seek them out as they see them in their neighborhoods. A lot of times when residents see the police officers walking around or coming into the neighborhood, they immediately believe that something bad has happened. We're trying to change that perception. We're trying to foster those relationships, build those guardianships and let people know that we're here to help them, to address their needs. So I encourage the residents to come out and meet the officers, share your concerns, whether positive, negative. If you need something, let them know about it. They're here to help and to, you know, make a better quality of life for everyone. So once again, Officer Cunningham, he is part of the second ward with his partner Officer Dolan. Officer Gallagher is part of the third ward with Officer Vicarelli. The first ward is Officer Richard Gino and Officer Troya. And our fourth ward was unable to come tonight because I had them work early today. And that is Officer Jason Bodett and Officer Pavel Dudinsky. So they worked hard today in the fourth ward, addressing some of the concerns that have been brought to our attention there. But once again, please become familiar with these officers. I encourage them to get out of their vehicles, break down those barriers and build and foster those relationships. As I mentioned earlier, I encourage people to call us. Again, we are here 24 hours a day, seven days a week, three four three three one five one is our main number. And we are here to provide a service to the residents and visitors of the city of Middletown. Just real quick, it is a great, great time for the city of Middletown. There's so many positive programs going on, a lot of positive investment and infrastructure taking place. Over the next several years, we're going to see a lot, a lot of positive changes within the city. I definitely am looking forward to it. I thank all the people that are responsible for it. I know there's a lot of people behind the scenes working on grants and finding occupants for vacant buildings and getting things in motion. And it's definitely noticed and well noted. And I definitely look forward to the future and many of those positive changes. So if there's no other questions, I thank you all for taking the time out of your evening to come out and join us tonight. And any... And as I said also, if you ever experience a situation that you don't feel that you've been treated fairly or got the proper response, please reach out and ask to speak with me. You could call me at three four six four zero zero four or you can email me and I'll respond. Thank you again.